The hotel, because the days were a little confused. They had a, they had workshops, they were very much famous. So, the hotel, the concierge, they said, "We won't charge you for this thing." So, I saw what we did, so it's the same. I said, "Okay, I get it now."
Hello? It's a good reminder.
Yeah, that is. When the room gets quiet and your phone starts ringing.
Good evening. We are now reconvening. Let's please begin with the adjournment of closed session.
Move to adjourn closed session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now reconvening open session, the time is 7:07. And first and foremost, let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. And could we please have Curtis Elementary School, 4th grade student, Iliana Dominguez, please lead us in the pledge? Did I say that right mommy, Iliana? Alright, just making sure.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please stand and face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give Iliana a round of applause. And now, we will have a special presentation by Mrs. Lisa LaBere. Bere, is it Bere? LaBere. Totally off on that one. 4th grade class, who will sing for us, "A Thanksgiving Garden."
A Thanksgiving garden. Plant three rows of peace. Peace in our hearts, peace in our schools, peace in our world. Plant four rows of squash. Squash gossip, squash indifference, squash grumbling, squash selfishness. Plant four rows of lettuce. Let us be faithful, let us be kind, let us be obedient, let us really love one another. No garden should be without turnips. Turnip for lessons, turnip on time, turnip to help one another. Water freely with patience, cultivate with love. There is abundance in your garden because you reap what you sow. To conclude our garden, we need time. Time for study, time for friends, time for family. Happy Thanksgiving.
One more round of applause for Mrs. LaBere. That was awesome guys, thank you. And also, let's also thank all of the parents, students, teachers, and administration, support staff from Curtis Elementary, along with principal Dr. Vince Rollins, for supporting our students tonight. We thank you. Next, we go to adoption of tonight's agenda.
Reporter, closed session?
Oh, correct. First, we go to report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Montes, we have two reports today. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Alejandro Olmos as High School Assistant Principal, Rialto High School. The roll call vote was unanimous. Action number two, in closed session, the board took action to approve the retirement and settlement agreement between the district and permanent classified employee number 1492115, effective December 12, 2015. The roll call vote was unanimous.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. Now, we can go on to adoption of tonight's agenda. I did receive a revision to an item K5.1. And I believe there might be copies available in the back front office there. And again, that's a revision that is different from what's in the book agenda. There's a form, there's a paper for item 5, K5.1 reference, that anyone can request a copy from the board secretary or from, there should be a stand outside with some copies. With that revision, could we get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda?
Second.
And for the record, with the revision of reference K5.1, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And tonight, we'll begin with the first item under B, presentations, and we have the DSAC High School report. And I believe we will ask our very own student board member to take it away.
Thank you. So, speaking first is Edward Ortiz from Rialto High School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. My name is Edward Ortiz, and I'm the proud ASB President of Rialto High School. And in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I would like to begin by expressing what I'm thankful for this year. I'm thankful for being given the opportunity to represent Rialto High in DSAC for a second year. I'm thankful for attending a school where 727 students attended the Honor Roll social today. And I am also thankful to attend a school where we have amazing student, staff, and parent involvement. Our Knights volleyball and cross-country teams made it to CIF playoffs for the fifth year in a row. Our amazing Broadway Knights theater program recently gave us a slice of history with the Fall Play Radium Girls, and held their annual Monster Bash to full houses each night. Rialto High was excited to welcome parents and guardians to our third annual Take Your Parents to School Day, in which parents were able to come in and live a day as a night. It is always a highlight of our year, and it was a great success. In addition to recognizing the achievements of our students, we're also pleased to have students nominate classified and certificated staff members each month. Join me in congratulating Mr. Ed Ott, Mr. Juan Gutierrez, Mr. Daryl Jackson, and Mr. Javier Mesa as our September and October staff members of the month. Everyone at Rialto High School appreciates our staff's hard work and dedication. I'm excited to invite you to some great upcoming events before the end of 2015. We'll be hosting our Winter Blood Drive on December 3rd, our Holiday Movie Night in the Great Hall on December 4th, our Winter Formal Masquerade on December 12th, and our Annual Canned Food Drive led by Sigma Beta Xi for November and December to help those in need who need it the most this holiday season. In closing, I would like to wish you all a great Thanksgiving filled with love, laughter, family, friends, and thankfulness. Have a great evening, everybody, thank you.
Speaking next is Alexis Rodriguez from Crowder High School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. Superintendent, I'm sorry. My name, my name is Alexis Rodriguez, and I am a proud DSAC Commissioner for Carter High School. We had our annual Red Ribbon Judging Day on October 28th, and Carter High School tied in third place with Trap Elementary School. Tonight, Carter will receive a $1,000 check for coming in third place. Our school is very thankful. This week, at Carter High School, where we promote, this week at Carter High School is our kindness week, where we promote kindness through our school. We will be doing different things each day to show how kind our school is. On Monday, on Monday was Walking on Kindness Day, we wrote kind words on our campus floor for students to see as they stepped onto our campus. On Tuesday, we wrote nice compliments on sticky notes and posted them all over Walk Carter. Students were able to take them as they pleased. Today, we passed out friendship bracelets, like these ones. We passed out the bracelets to students who we don't normally talk to on a daily, sorry, on a daily basis. And we did that to show that they matter to us. Tomorrow, we will be passing out kindness grams to those who purchase them for their friends. On Friday, we will be passing out paper paws that say "Every Lion Counts" to each student on campus. On December 5th, we will be, my ASB class will be participating in a Christmas parade as we normally do each year. And thank you, have a nice night, everyone.
Next is Jesus Garcia from Myler High School.
Good evening to the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education members, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and to all attending this meeting, I wish you a good evening. We began the 2015 school year at Myler High School with new computers in every classrooms and new carpets school-wide. We also have new computers as a panic as well, especially thanks to the district. On October 14th, we had the Blood Drive, many students donated to those who are in need. On October 15th was a school-side council meeting following the English Learners Advisory Committee on the October 22nd. On October 24th was the Parents Summit at Rialto High School. On the 28th of October, Myler High School celebrated Red Ribbon Week. We decorated the fence with cyr- sorry, we decorated the fence with styrofoam cups saying "Drug Free." On November 2nd, Myler High School celebrated Day of the Dead. Attending the celebration were acid dancers and assembly took place talking about what the day represents. Myler High School is having a, Myler High School is having a, I'm sorry, it's my first time. It's having a mural painted to remind those, "Don't test while driving." It began in October and will be finishing in this month. We also have a new apartment built for the adult transitional program, and would like to invite our board down to see the apartment. Thank you for listening, and have a good night, thank you.
Our last speaker is Emily Mendez from Eisenhower High School.
Good evening, oh, good evening, Board Members of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and our viewing audience. My name is Emily Mendez, and I am the Associated Student Body Ambassador of Eisenhower High School. I am here to inform you all of the jolly good events that are occurring this season at Eisenhower. December 5th is a day full of caroling events to attend. Our show choir is hosting their holiday choir concert at Carter High School. There are two different timings, which are either at 2:00 PM or 6:00 PM. Tickets differ from VIP $7, Preferred $5, or General $4. Also, on December 5th at 10:00 AM, Eisenhower would like to formally invite everyone here tonight, along with our viewing audience, to cheer on our Rialto Christmas Parade and welcoming Christmas to our beautiful city. Eisenhower High School will have their own float created by our senior class of 2016. Did any of you hear of the murder mystery that occurred at Eisenhower High School? Well, I sure did. Eisenhower High School will be hosting their second murder mystery this year, an event created for staff, students, and families to enjoy dinner, performances by our dance team, show choir, and drama, and to also solve a mystery. This event will be on December 10th at 4:00 PM in the Eisenhower Cafeteria. Tickets are $10. Rialto is a little city that hasn't experienced show in a while, but Eisenhower is surely going to change that, because we are making it snow. Yes, snow. On December 11th, Eisenhower is having their Winter Green and Gold Assembly. Our theme is Crystal Kingdom, and it is going to be bigger than any other assembly held in the district. Talking about snow, Eisenhower's Winter Formal is right around the corner, and I still haven't bought my dress. Winter Formal is December 12th from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Tickets are on sale now for $30 with an ASB card, $35 without an ASB card, and $40 at the door. Once again, my name is Emily Mendez from Eisenhower High School, and I will be looking forward to see you all, at least one, if not all, at our spectacular events. Thank you for your time, and have a great night.
Thank you, Natalie. And again, let's give one more round of applause to all the student speakers from DSAC. We want you to know, when you come up, it's okay to be nervous. It takes practice to speak in public, and I think it's a great, great, awesome thing that we have DSAC, and we have the students come and present, and come and speak, and really garnish those skill sets to be able to speak in public and be good speakers. So, please, don't worry if you mess up. We still mess up all the time. We're nervous all the time. So, don't worry about a thing, the more you do it, the better, you get at it. And again, thank you guys. Next up, we have item 2, Kiwanis Club of Rialto Recognition. And give me a second here. Need you help, or you got it? Alrighty. It has been said that volunteers reflect this nation's compassion, patience, and care by their unwavering commitment to give back to their community. These are the men and women who consistently find ways to help people, particularly our deserving students. And how fitting that in November, when our nation celebrates Thanksgiving, tonight, our Board of Education is also thanking the Kiwanis Club of Rialto for its service to Rialto Unified School District students. Let's give a round of applause to the Kiwanis. Now, we're going to be reading off the names of various members from the Kiwanis Club of Rialto, who we would like to thank and honor tonight in recognition for all that they do for this community and for our students. But before we do that, I'm just going to read a little bit of history about the Kiwanis. The Kiwanis Club was started in 1956. This club has been awarding Student of the Month to Rialto High School students since the school opened in 1993. Quote, "We began, we began with Rialto High School, but now we also award scholarships to Carter and Eisenhower High School students," said Kiwanis Club of Rialto President Diane, I want to get this name right, DeBorgian? DeBorgian. Thank you, thank you. I'm still learning, I'm still learning. See students, don't feel bad. Quote, quote, "One male and one female student are presented $500 scholarship, scholarships each. We also present outstanding middle school students plaques at the end of the year. These students are chosen for us by the school staff," end quote. Kiwanis Club of Rialto also supports Dunn Elementary School's BUG Program, and BUG stands for Bring Up Grades. That's an awesome acronym. Because as parents and teachers, we're always bugging our kids, right? Bring the grades up. It makes total sense. The club actively partners in charitable events with the Rialto Child Assistance League, Vista Cove Nursing Home, and the Rialto United Methodist Church. The club's major fundraiser is the fireworks booth for 4th of July. So, let's just chime in there and make sure everybody supports the fireworks booth for the Kiwanis next 4th of July. And the Kiwanis Club of Rialto meets on Tuesday evenings at 6:00 PM at Carol's Restaurant in Rialto. The club's annual dues are $150 per person. Anyone wishing to join, it's more than welcome to attend meetings and get more information. But truly, tonight, on behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to thank the Kiwanis Club of Rialto for being a wonderful source of support of the Rialto Unified School District and our students. We commend your commitment to our education community, and we would like you to accept our official certificates of appreciation, which are long overdue. And we thank you again for everything that you do. Let's give them one more round of applause, please. So, we will let the Kiwanis leadership say a few words after we first hand out these certificates, and I've asked our Vice President, Ms. Nancy O'Callie, to please help me pass these out. If anybody is here, not here tonight, perhaps we can collect the ones that are not here for anybody that would like to take them to the club the next meeting, and the president to the next meeting and hand them there. So, we will begin, looks like we got alphabetic order here. Mr. Alan Dyer, is he here tonight? He's not here, but let's give him a round of applause anyway. We have Mr. Alfredo Sanchez, Treasurer, is he here tonight? Also, not here, but we'll give him a round of applause. Now, I don't know if this is a joke, or if this is just a name coincidence, but we have Bill Clinton? Okay. Let's give Bill Clinton a round of applause. We have our very own state representative, Cheryl Brown, she here tonight? No, but we will give her a round, alright. Columbus Singletary? Not here tonight, round of applause. Dale Williamson? Round of applause. Okay, and we do have in the house tonight, the President of the Kiwanis, Diane DeBorgian. We also want to thank Dom Williamson. We understand, no problem. We understand, no problem. We won't hold it against them, no, no problem. Yeah, there's another one here. You can give them both. Thank you, Don. Next, we have our very own former Rialto Unified School District Board of Education Board Member, past President and past Vice President, everything else, Dr. John Castellunas. Then, we have Mr. Frank Clinton. Mr. Frank Garza. Mrs. Hattie Inch. Mr. Joe Baca Jr. Mr. Joe Baca Jr. might be at a softball game, that's correct. He's also coaching for the Lady Knights there, thank you, Ms. O'Callie. Mr. Jordan Beach. Our very own Board Member, Mr. Joseph W. Martinez. Mr. Josue Castillo, probably working in Sacramento tonight too. Mrs. June Dyer. Let's give her a round of applause anyway. Kathleen McWharter. Oh, wow. And Mrs. McWharter has just notified me that she was a 15-year veteran counselor at Rialto High School. Kristy Streff. Let's give her a round of applause. Let's give her a round of applause. Mr. Larry Westcott. Maria Singletary? Not here tonight, let's give her a round of applause. Martha Williamson? Give her a round of applause. Myrna Reese? Almost, we're almost there. Ms. Reyna Duenez, Club Secretary? Not here tonight? And last but not least, Mr. Scott Folkins. Okay, let's give him a round of applause. Did we miss anybody? Okay. All right, great. Yes, please. And if the entire Board and our Superintendent could please come up and take this picture with the Kiwanis.
I have room for you to get right next to Mr. Abila. I mean, Mr. Ayala. Perfect. One, two, three, come over here. Have three of these in Twitter, one, two, three.
Okay, we're going to say a couple more right here. One, two, three.
We'll make sure that we can tell you those. Thank you.
One more round of applause.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank the Board and thank all that have showed up. Rialto Kiwanis is a service organization, and we are proud to serve the community. We serve the children. And we're an individual club in Rialto, but we're also an international club. And we just celebrated our 100th. Kiwanis International just celebrated their 100th. And for all you ladies in the room, we just installed our first international female president this year. I'm proud to represent and I'm proud to be President of the club, and thank you so much.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you again. We can't thank you guys enough. Thank you. Next, we go to Presentations, Item B, Three. And we will begin with the Employees of the Quarter. And I've asked Ms. Walker to please begin with REA's Employee of the Quarter.
So, good evening. Tonight, the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education would like to honor Mr. Michael Montano. A Rialto High School English teacher as the Rialto Education Association's Employee of the Quarter. So, Mr. Montano was born in Los Angeles and currently lives in Rialto. He graduated from Monobello High in 1988. He attended Long Beach State, where he earned his bachelor's degree in English, with an emphasis in language and composition. Mr. Montano taught at St. John's Bosco and All-Boys Catholic School in Bellflower in the City of Industry, and also taught in Azusa, Bellflower, and Gutiheh ABC District. He was hired as an English teacher at Rialto High School by Rialto Unified School District in 2008. Mr. Montano teaches ninth, 10th, and 12th grade English. "The best part," and this is in his words, "the best part of teaching is observing the light bulbs that light up in their heads when they actually get it," he replied. "The only child of Robert and Chris Montano is single." Is that for... Who put that in there? Rialto Unified is a dating service now. So, the only child of Robert and Chris Montano is single. But in joy is keeping active. The 45-year-old educator joined the district's bowling league and recently cut his curly locks to donate to pediatric cancer patients. The recognition of Employee of the Quarter came as a shock to him. He said, "I actually was very surprised," he answered. "There are so many deserving teachers in Rialto, so it's nice to have this surprise." Ms. Lisa Lindberg, President of REA, stated, "Michael is on our political action committee and our goal team, get organized." He volunteers for our Rialto community events, manning the REA booth with his colleagues, and attends various CTA-sponsored conferences on the weekend to further his skills as a site representative and an active union member. "Michael can always be counted on to step up and do what needs to be done. Our USD and REA are fortunate to have him." Congratulations to Mr. Montano. Let's give him a big hand. And you can have a few words if you'd like. Did you bring anybody with you today?
I did not.
Oh, microphone? And you can have some words?
One, I just want to thank Lisa for recognizing me. I also have to give a shout out to our very own Mr. Garza Sauce, who's kind of taken me under his wing a little bit. Last year, becoming a union rep, it's been an education for me beyond the classroom and continually learning there as I find out, you know, that it's a lot more than just a teacher thing. And this year, I found what I found and have really set my sights to is that union part of it, REA. There should also be a union, which I'm looking forward to stepping out more and solidifying the union between the REA and the community, not just the parents, but all community of Rialto, which I am now a community member myself. But I think it's just another avenue of reaching our children through all levels of the junior high, grade school, high school. We all need to... It takes a community to raise a child. So, I just want to say, you know, again, thank you, and I look forward to working with the community as I slowly get my feet wet in that area. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations again.
One more round of applause for our awesome, awesome teachers. Next, we have a recognition of Employee of the Quarter for CSEA.
I really don't need it, but I still try to talk into it. Could I please have Mr. Timothy Applegate come down here, please? It is my pleasure tonight to honor Mr. Timothy Applegate as the Classified School Employees Association Employee of the Quarter. Mr. Applegate is the lead warehouse worker at the district's warehouse department, and you are a special person for that. Although many employees may not visibly observe Mr. Applegate, the task at hand is ample. And the... I'm not quite sure if this is a word, but we'll use it anyway. Answerability of supply and demand is important during instruction time, and he always delivers. In other words, he makes sure that the school sites have what they need when they need it, and that's of crucial importance. "We have a lot of responsibilities in our department," he replied. "The freight, the logistics, computer-related equipment, fixed assets, maintenance and operations tools and parts, and papers for classrooms, they all go through the warehouse." Born in the city of Fontana, Mr. Applegate graduated from Bloomington High School in 1998. He began working in construction, oftentimes supervising coworkers. His projects would have... Excuse me. Would have him travel to various parts of California, Utah, and Arizona. He was hired in 2010 as a nutrition service driver, but a year later, he accepted the position as a lead warehouse worker. "I enjoy every day of my job," he smiled. "Every day is different, so it keeps our days productive." Mr. Applegate is a single father of one daughter, Ashley, who attends Bloomington High School. He loves horseback riding, and as always, he says, "Anything outdoors, I'm all over it." Daniel Distola, the purchasing manager for the Rialto Unified School District, nominated Mr. Applegate. "It has been my pleasure to work with Tim for the past two years here in Rialto. During that time, I have observed Tim demonstrating an excellent work ethic. Tim will go well beyond what is required and is happy to do so. Tim truly understands the importance of getting supplies delivered in a timely manner to best serve our end users. Tim is not afraid to take on a large project and will immerse himself in that project until completion. I have received many compliments from other staff members on his pleasant demeanor and willingness to help out. He is extremely knowledgeable in warehousing procedures and does all that he can to improve the processes to better serve our customers. I am proud to have Tim as a valued member of the team." CSEA President Linda Silva added, "Tim is a perfect example of an outstanding customer service representative in our district. Always wanting to help or assist in any way that he can, Tim is very polite, courteous, and friendly employee who thinks of others' needs before his own." Congratulations, Mr. Applegate. And do you have anyone with you here tonight? No? Okay. Let me present you with this Certificate of Recognition for Employee of the Quarter for the California School Employees Association. And congratulations, and we really value your service. Come on.
I too would like to present him with a certificate from our chapter... Sorry. For CSEA, Rialto Chapter 203, would like to give you the Certificate of Recognition for Employee of the Quarter for your dedicated service to the employees of the Rialto School District.
Congratulations.
Congratulations again.
And thank you all for bearing with us here tonight. We know people got a lot of things to do. Students need to go home and do homework and stuff and have dinner. But if you guys could just... Those of you who can, just bear with us. We have a few more very important recognitions next, and then we'll begin with our usual business as usual with the agenda tonight. But next, could we please have RSMA Employee of the Quarter?
I'll start with a little story. Every school requires certain staff to function at high levels in order for that school to run efficiently. I can attest that there were times when I was a teacher, on a rainy day or traffic was backed up on the freeway, that I'd show up to work, and there was times I had 40 kids in my classroom, and the teacher next door to me was not there. And he had 40 kids. So, I had to take his kids and put them in my classroom, which the capacity only had 45, and I had 80 kids in that room. So, when you think of that situation, you say, what do you do? What can be done? Well, the person I'm going to call up to the podium here is one of those individuals who's made a difference, who's been able to solve that dilemma. And how do you solve a dilemma like that? Well, you have to know your employees. You have to know where people... Where they are during certain times of the day. If they have a prep, if they're at the local coffee shop, wherever. You have to know your resources. So, with that in mind, can we call up Mrs. Hanya Rodriguez? Much appreciated. Do you have family with you tonight? Okay, well, you know what? Take a look around. This is your family, right here. Everyone here is your family. We have a little script that I'll read. The Rialto Unified School District Board of Education honors Mrs. Hanya Rodriguez tonight as the Rialto School Managers Association's Employee of the Quarter. Mrs. Rodriguez is a Personnel Technician for Certified Staff. Born in Costa Rica, Ms. Rodriguez attended the University of Costa Rica and relocated to the United States to attend Santa Monica College. She moved with her family to Rialto 26 years ago. In 1995, she began working for the Rialto Unified School District, first as a substitute clerk in Personnel Services. Then she was transferred to KC Elementary School for one month. After serving as a clerk typist two, in 1999, Ms. Rodriguez was again reclassified as a Personnel Technician under the Confidential Employee Classification. Would you like me to read this or would you like to read that? "I'm honored to be at a place where I enjoy coming to work," she says. "I like my job and the people I work with." Ms. Rodriguez is a single mother. She has three grown children. One daughter, Kimberly, who is at Eisenhower High School graduate, and a teacher in Seattle, Washington. Two sons, Steve and another Eisenhower High School graduate, who is with the United States Marines, and her youngest son, Samuel, who is a graduate of Carter High School and recently deployed by the U.S. Navy. Hanya said, "She enjoys reading, cooking, and spending time with her children." "Within a couple of years, they ended up all over the place," she smiled. "But we have always been close, and my family is the center of my existence." Good for you. Rialto RSMA President, Dr. Monty Stewart, are you here? Okay. Said, "We look forward to honoring dedicated and caring employees each quarter who find ways to go above and beyond, whether they are at school sites or support sites." As one of our colleagues, Michelle Buckley, who is nominated, Hanya stated, "She does so much for the students of Rialto by making sure that teachers have substitute coverage. It's not an easy job, but she does it, and you do it well, Mrs. Rodriguez." Congratulations. So, tonight, the Rialto Unified School District are proud to give you the Certificate of Recognition for a job well done. And we thank you so much, and we appreciate it. And please, if you'd like to say something, I'm right here with you. Oh, come on, come on.
I'd like to thank...
I'd like to thank RSMA for nominating me Employee of the Quarter. I really appreciate this, I'm very honored. It is a pleasure to work here. I love my coworkers, I love my job. Thank you so much to all of you for being here and for all your support. Thank you again.
Wait, wait a minute, let's get your coworkers that are here tonight, let's get a picture with you. Let's get your coworkers here.
Well deserved.
All right, let's get the whole family in there.
One, two, three, do one more.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Okay, as long as they're doing good, send them my love.
Two more, two more very important presentations tonight, folks, and we apologize for having so much to cover tonight, but unfortunately, we did try to cram two board meetings into one board meeting to allow staff to enjoy Thanksgiving vacation next week, so bear with us here. Next, we go to Item B four under Presentations, and that will be the awarding of the Key to the District by our very own Board Member, Mr. Joseph W. Martinez, to our very own Mrs. Wilmer Amina Carter.
Thank you, President Montez, and good evening, everyone. The Key to the District is the highest honor that can be presented by a Board Member of the Rialto Unified School District. And tonight, I truly humbly stand here with much admiration. I didn't think I was going to do that.
It's okay, take your time, take your time.
With much admiration for the recipient of tonight's award, I'm extremely pleased to award my key. You may have to read this.
You're doing fine.
To the District, to one of our local education pioneers and my personal hero. Miss Wilmer Amina Carter, please join me, thank you. Please come up. Okay, I told myself that wasn't going to happen.
It's okay.
You're such a blessing to see every time. I also invite any family or guests who may have.
They're watching.
They're watching, okay. They're with us. Okay, Miss Carter was born in Neshoba County, Mississippi, among the Choctaw Native American People. A San Bernardino County resident since the early fifties and a resident of Rialto since 1972, she began breaking gender and color barriers at an early age. In 1960, while pursuing her college education, Miss Carter also worked and has a distinction of being the first African-American Sales Associate for the Sears &amp; Roebuck's Department Store in San Bernardino. She was also the first African-American Secretary at California Division of Highways, now Caltrans. She graduated from San Bernardino Valley College in 1959. Now, 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 you're getting better. She then received her bachelor's degree from Cal State San Bernardino in 1972 and four years later, earned her master's degree in education with an emphasis in psychology. She also holds a Pupil Personnel Life Credential in Counseling Fieldwork. From 1973 to 1999, the former English teacher and academic counselor worked for the late United States Congressman Georgie Brown, Jr., in what was then the thirty-sixth, now the forty-second congressional district. Congressman Brown is hailed as the longest-serving congressman in U.S. history. Miss Carter was a district director for Congressman Brown until his death in 1999. In 1983, Miss Carter was elected as the first African-American School Board Member in the Rialto Unified School District. She fulfilled sixteen successful years on the RUSD Board of Education. Ironically, the same year that Congressman Brown passed, she opted to end her reign on the school board. Not many people have a reign on a school board. I don't know about that. "I learned so much from Congressman Brown," she recalled, "but above all, how to treat people and that no matter what title you hold, all people should be entitled to respect and courtesy." From 1999 to 2002, Miss Carter worked for the Office of the President at Cal State San Bernardino as Legislative Assistant Community Relations Coordinator. Shortly after, she accepted a position with Office of the San Bernardino County Fifth District Supervisor. I tried to find out who that was. Who was that?
Not telling.
Okay. In 2000, Dr. Young, thank you. In 2003, the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education named its third comprehensive high school in honor of the lifelong education advocate. Wilmer Amina Carter High School opened its doors to serve students in 2004. In 2006, Miss Carter was elected to the California State Assembly Sixty-second District Seat. She retired from the Assembly Seat in 2012. Miss Carter is married to Civic and Business Leader, Retibu Jacobs, who she calls "Her Rock." The couple share three daughters and eight grandchildren, most of whom attend Rialto Schools. They run two creative businesses, here's a quick plug, in Rialto, Creative Business Services and Elegant Floors and Window Covering. A laundry list of sixty-five recognitions and merits have been awarded to Miss Carter. Among the recognitions, she was elected as the League of Woman Voters Citizen of the Year, Rialto and Fontana's NAACP Woman of Achievement. She was awarded an honorary doctoral degree from Philip Randolph Institute and was selected as the Los Angeles Sentinel's Woman of the Year. Wilmer Amina Carter, you have come from a humble beginning as a country girl, growing up in the segregated South. I like that about you. She says she's still a country girl. To living a purposeful, purposeful life as a civic leader and educational advocate in the city of Rialto. Throughout nearly four decades of your impeccable leadership, both civic and educationally, you have utilized your power to help the community. Whether helping to build new schools or bringing state superintendents to our area, retired or not, your loving reach and achievements are not only historical, but relevant to the success of the district. Thank you for your lifelong commitment to our growing and diverse community of students. I'm elated to give you my Key to the District.
Oh my God, it's Carter!
Oh my God, look at this, Carter!
Evidently not all of them are watching from here.
Oh my God.
This is the one, poor video.
Oh, can I take, can I, can I take a picture with Carter?
Let's bring them, let's bring them all up to the front here and if you'd like to share some words, Miss Carter, please do so, then we'll get that picture.
Well, before I join my Carter friends, I'd like to thank Board Member Martinez and all of the other Board Members and our Superintendent, Dr. Avila, and our Board, Student Board Rep, Ms. Spaca. Thank you all so much for this recognition. Of course, the recognition goes to my family, my husband, my three daughters, my eight grandchildren, and all of the children of the Rialto School District. And so you have to stand there for a minute because I do have to tell you a story. When I first became a member of the School Board, one of my first functions was to go speak to students. At that time, the county had money, you know, we had money in education, and the county had a luncheon for student board reps, representatives from the different schools who came to make presentations. And it was held downtown at the Masonic Temple. And so one of my first things was I was invited to come speak to these students, these young leaders. And so I got up and talked on and on and on about what all I was going to do, you know, provide an education, get funding, make sure you had good housing, good schools, and good curriculum, and that you could be all you could be, and that's what I was going to do. And so, you know, I had this great speech and when I was done and got ready to go, I started to the car and I thought about it. I had also said that the reason that I was doing all of that, I said to the students, was because I wanted them to be able to take care of me when I got old. So that they, they would be good citizens and they would have an education and they would be the leaders and they would take care of me when I'm old. So I was going to my car and I turned around and there was this young student, a little redheaded boy from Redlands High School. He came up to me, opened the door, and he said, "Miss Carter, don't you worry about a thing. When I become President of the United States, I'm going to take care of you when you're old." And so I never forgot that statement and I never stopped working for students because I know they're going to be our next leaders. I never stopped working to make sure that they had good schools, that they had the appropriate funding that they needed, that they had good curriculums, that they had good teachers, that they had good staffs. I never stopped working for that, even now that I'm not on the Board, I never stopped working for you all. I still do it because I still hear that voice of that young student who told me, "When I become President, Miss Carter, I'm going to take care of you." So I expect you, Carter kids, when I get old, don't you put me in a rest home and forget me, you take care of me. Now can I take a picture with my students?
Can we have the Board Members there a little bit closer, students? And Administration of Carter, you can definitely go in. It just helps me. Yeah, please. Thank you. You're good, you're good. Angles are always good. Ready? Okay, I need that side to be a little bit closer. I know everybody's smiling, but I need, it doesn't look like that close in the pictures for us. Okay, one, two, three, big smile, one, two, and three.
One more right over here?
I'd like to suggest maybe one picture here and one picture from over there.
You got it.
You can move it, move it.
Okay, there we go, that's all right. One, two, three. Right over there.
And three, turn your head. One, two, and three, one, two, and three. Thank you.
You guys can all give our hugs, but we have a live board meeting, so if you want to go away, stay behind.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, President Montez.
Last but not least, we have one more presentation, and if you look around at the small children in the room, this is probably the most important one for them. The moment they've been waiting for. Tonight, Dr. Avila will be presenting the Red Ribbon Week Schoolwide Decoration Contest So let's get all the students here, let's get all the winners from the schools to come and pack this room here. And Dr. Avila, please take it away.
Thank you, President Montez. When our students' minds are alert and focused and their bodies are healthy, the possibilities for student success are even greater. The Rialto Unified School District has a rich tradition of holding its annual Red Ribbon Week Schoolwide Decoration Contest during the National Red Ribbon Week Commemoration, which is generally held during the last full week in October. In the spirit of promoting a drug-free lifestyle, student staff, school staff, and hundreds of dedicated parent volunteers set out to demonstrate their pledge of drug-free lifestyle by decorating their school campuses with bright red ribbons and the positive messages promoting healthy living. Sponsored by the Rialto Unified School District Safety and Security, Communications Services, and Risk Management Departments, on October 29th, twenty judges comprised of Rialto Police and Fire Chiefs, city leaders, a columnist from the Sun Newspaper, and the editor of the Rialto Record, along with Board Members Joe Ayala, Mr. Joe Ayala, and Mr. Joseph Martinez, rode in vans observing RUSD schools for the district-wide school decoration contests. Red Ribbon Week honors the life of DEA Agent Enrique Kiki Camarena, who was killed during, while working undercover in Mexico investigating a major drug cartel. Within weeks of his death in March of 1985, Camarena's Congressman Duncan Hunter and high school friend Henry Lozano launched Camarena Clubs in Imperial Valley, California, Camarena's home. Hundreds of clubs pledged to lead drug-free lives to honor the sacrifices made by Camarena and others on behalf of all Americans. These coalitions began to wear red badges of satin red ribbons as a symbol of Camarena's memory. The Red Ribbon Week campaign emerged from the efforts of these clubs and coalitions. Today, Red Ribbon Week is nationally recognized and celebrated during the last full week in October, helping to preserve the Special Agent Camarena's memory and further the cause for which he gave his life. The Red Ribbon Campaign also became a symbol of support for the DEA's efforts to reduce demands for drugs through prevention and education programs. By wearing a red ribbon during the last week in October, Americans demonstrate their ardent opposition to drugs. They pay homage to only, not only to Special Agent Camarena, but to all men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice in support of our nation's struggles against drug trafficking and drug abuse. Today, we honor the top RUSD schools which placed the highest in the areas of creativity, visibility, and drug-free, and the drug-free theme, "Respect Yourself, Be Drug-Free" during the Red Ribbon Week. Upon observing the schools and looking at how hard students, parents, and staff were working, I, as a Superintendent- working, I, as a Superintendent, decided to double the amount that each first, second, and third place winners would earn. When I call your school's name, when I call your school's name, please have students, principal, staff, of course, the parent volunteers come up to pick up your presentation, checks, and trophies. The competition was very, very intense. I had the opportunity to visit every school that day. I rode in one of the vans that observed 10 of the schools, but earlier in the day, again, I took a trip around Rialto to make sure that I observed every school. And so it was very, very intense, and that's part of the reason why we decided to double the prize, to recognize the efforts that were put in by students, staff, and parents. And as a result, we ended up with three ties. Ties for third place, ties for second place, and ties for first place. The third-place winners tie Carter High School and Trap Elementary School, each receiving a check of $1,000 and a trophy. So let's, Carter High School, if you can come up and receive. To Principal Ms. Kristin Foote, in honor of your school's participation, we recognize you with a trophy and a check displaying the $1,000 that the school will receive for its efforts.
And at this time, are there parents who helped decorate? They can come in as well. The parents were very important in this, so if you want to bring them?
No, our kids did all the decorations.
Oh, okay. You can get in a little bit. One, two, and three.
Okay, one more right there, one more right there. One, two, three.
Good job, Carter!
Now, if we can have the representatives from Trap Elementary School. And to Principal Roxanne Dominguez, a trophy recognizing the efforts of the school, and a check for $1,000.
And before we present the next one, I just would like to add that Mr. Ed Palmer, not only is a parent, not only is a parent here of RUSD, but he's also a local dignitary and one of our very own city council members here for the city, so let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, thank you.
And our second-place winners, co-champs, co-winners, Coriak Elementary School. So Principal, we can present you with the trophy. And a check for $1,500.
Yay!
And our second, second-place winner, co-winner, Dunn Elementary School.
I know, they got their shirts.
And so again, in recognition of your efforts, we present you a trophy for the school, to Principal Dr. Fernando Navarrete, and a check for $1,500. And now for our first-place winners. Although all the competition was very competitive, the first-place competition was unbelievable. First up is Garcia Elementary School. And the entire perimeter at Garcia Elementary School was decorated from top to bottom, and it included a dance performance by students, so they went all out. So in recognition of those great efforts, we present you with this trophy. And a check for $2,000. And a school not to be outdone, that also included extensive decorations, but also included heroes from the Hall of Justice, led by Principal and Superman, Mr. Adam Wagner, and that is Kelly Elementary School. And a check for $2,000.
Wow! Like my neighbor would say, "Nope," as well. That was awesome. Let's give one more round of applause to all of the students and parents and staff members who participated. Thank you, Dr. Avila. All right, now for our regular board meeting. We go on to Item C, Comments. Item C1, Public Comments from the Floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes.
Thank you, and we have three. First, we have Mr. Rod Campbell and Sandra Morales.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Avila, members of the school board, and viewing audience. My name is Sandra Morales, and I am a member of the Rialto Robotics Club. Saturday, we hosted the Second Annual Inland Empire's First LEGO League Robotics Qualifier. We had 14 teams from San Bernardino, Riverside, and Orange County compete in four categories of robot design, waste reduction project, core values, and teamwork, and robot performance. Our district was represented by teams from J-Hugh, COB, and Cussera. One more and we would have had them all. They would like to congratulate, we would like to congratulate the Rialto Robotics from Cussera for winning Best Robotic Performance, and they will be attending Legoland in December to compete at the next level. The RMS Builders Club, National Junior Art Society, and ASB assisted in hosting the event. Along with the support of our Tiger staff, the East Rialto Cubans, Lions, and other community members, we shared. The event was attended by over 400 parents and community members from around the Inland Empire. Our local sponsors, who provided lunch and t-shirts for all the teams, were Edco Waste Management, Horace Mann, Autographics, Jersey Mics, and Coffin Nuts. We would also like to thank all of you who stopped by to support our team in our event. Dr. Avila, Dr. Dee Suiza, Ms. O'Kelly, Mr. Montez, Juanita Chan, and of course, our strongest supporter of many years, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Martinez was there from the beginning, at 7:00 to the end at 5:30. I was tired, but Mr. Martinez just kept going. Thank you for all your support Saturday and over the years. I would now like to leave with a quote. Volunteers do not have enough time, but they do have enough heart. The Rialto Robotics Team, as well as the other Rust teams, thank you, and we will be in touch next year with you for our Third Annual Inland Empire First LEGO League Qualifier. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, would you like to add a few words? Wasn't gonna let you get away that easy.
She's better than me. I want to thank the board support, our staff at our school. Everybody was behind us 100%. We put this on last year because we weren't able to get into a tournament. And we said, "Why can't we get in? Everybody's full. It's a major San Diego thing, it's a major Los Angeles thing." Inland Empire is growing. We went from 48 teams to 78 last year. So we're growing and growing, and we said, "We want to put one on so our team can get in." At the same time, we kind of challenged the other middle schools, "Let's get a team going." So thanks to a science grant, we got some robots for the other schools, and we got four of our schools in this time, which was great. We had a second place in projects for Rialto Middle School, we had a first place in performance. That shows that we're getting competitive. We're going up against schools that they have a class all day long, and that's what they do. So we do one hour after school, one day a week, and we do pretty good. So if we had some STEM classes, just think what we could do. So next year, we've already agreed to the third year. I don't know about after that, my daughter will have to take over, but we have two daughters in the district and lots of grandsons and grandkids and the staff there at Rialto Middle School, and we've got three service clubs. We were able to put it on, and I think we have the best one around. I go down and do the one at Legoland and help judge down there, and I think we're as good as the professionals are doing. So we're looking forward to next year, we're looking forward to maybe taking a few of the trophies. I mean, we're already in trouble with some of the other teams because we were so highly attended by the city and by the school district. People are looking around like, "Well, what's going on here?" And it's like, you just have to put the word out here in Rialto, and everybody is behind saying, "Let's do it for the kids." So that's why we do it. So thank you very much.
Next, we have Mr. Russell Silva.
Good evening, board members, administration, and viewing audience. My name is Russell Silva. I would also like to thank Rod Campbell and Shelley Gates for inviting me and others to participate in this wonderful event on Saturday. It gave us all an opportunity to get out there and see, witness the wonderful skills of our, and achievements of our middle school students. And it was a heck of a lot of fun. Schools came from as far away as Palm Desert, and they participated in this, probably the biggest event that we've had in Inland Empire for this. And the volunteers were able to get up there. As a volunteer, I was able to interact with a lot of the different teams and feel the enthusiasm that they brought with them, their teamwork, their camaraderie, their support, not just for their team members, but for all the other teams that were there as well. And we had many volunteers that came out and did things, and there was three categories that they all participated in. The Challenge Project, the Core Values Project, and the Robot Design. And in the Challenge Project, they had to develop a solution for some real-world world situations, and this particular one was called Trash Treks, to deal with the concerns of our trash in today's world. Rialto Middle School looked into the amount of food that was being thrown away at the lunchtime, because a lot of kids don't eat. They take it, but then they toss it away. And one of their solutions was to either inform food services that, hey, maybe you're giving us too much food, or maybe even come up with a different diet that the students would actually eat instead of throw away. And in the Core Values area, they were given time to think about it and then build themselves a structure out of Legos to best describe their values as a team. And J-Hugh actually built, they just stacked some Legos without connecting them and made a little tower, and then they knocked them over and then restacked them. And they did that in evidence to prove that we stand together as a unit, but if we fall, we all fall. We all stumble, but we turn around and pick each other up, and we continue to move forward. And I thought that was a really good event. In the Robots Division, they showed we were able to demonstrate how their robot acted, how they put it together, how they programmed it to do what it needed to do. So all the events were really great. I was lucky to be a referee for the events tournament, and they all brought their teams in and their robots in, and they did different, different things with the event. Overall, it was a great day, and as an adult kid, I was very jealous because I didn't have a chance to play. This is the perfect reason why, and Mr. Campbell mentioned it, how technology and the programs like STEM are very valuable to the school's curriculum, because it brings out that inner process, that inner abilities that those kids have to think way outside the box. So for those of you that missed the opportunity to see our middle students soar, take new heights, you got to come out next year, because I'm going to be there. Thank you, Rod and Shelley. It was an experience I'll never forget.
All righty, next we go on to Item C2, Public Comments on Agenda Items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any for on the agenda?
We do not.
Okey-dokey. Next, we go to Item C3, Comments from Association Executive Board Members, and we'll begin with Rialto Education Association, REA, if we have any members here tonight that would like to take the floor. Hearing none. Is somebody coming down that hall? Oh, okay. I had a feeling. I had a feeling. I had a feeling.
Mr. Montez, there was an oversight. We do have one more speaker for an item not on the agenda.
Okay, after Ms. Limberg, we'll go back.
I apologize. Arnie Ayala from Rialto High School had my ear, so blame him. I would just like to remind you, I think you got your invitations to the School Board Dinner. I had Rosie hand them out to you. I've heard from Mr. Martinez, but REA would like to host all of you. It's in Corona on December 10th. Deb McKenzie and myself will be there, so just respond to that number on the invite, and we hope you can make it. And bring a guest if you'd like. And the other thing I'd like to talk about is, we had our conference at the Queen Mary, and we sent 24 of our members, and I want to tell you some of the sessions we had. Unconscious Bias, Common Core, Special Education, Workplace Bullying, School Safety, and a very popular one, Retiree Health Benefits. Their next conference, we're going to try and send our brand-new teachers, is the Good Teaching Conference at Garden Grove in February, and I've already had two newbies, as we call them, contact me and say they want to go. So, we're hoping to send about 20 to 30 of those teachers to the Good Teaching Conference, so... And I hope I see you at the School Board Dinner. Many of your colleagues will be there. Thank you.
We'll go ahead and take one step back?
Yes, we have Ms. Mirna Ruiz.
You almost forgot about me, right? Good evening, Board and viewing audience. Just real quick, I just wanted to once again thank everybody for coming or attending our PTA event that we had. It was our Superintendent Roundtable, and it was held and hosted by the Fifth District PTA. And just to let you know, I mean, I have the names of everybody that was there. It's gonna take me a little too long, because actually, Rialto won first place for having the most members of school district being there. So, yay! So, thank you. I just want to say thank you to everybody that was there, all the schools and everybody, the cabinet that was there. Thank you, I appreciate it. So, he was short.
Any more?
No more.
Okay, so we go back to Item C3, Comments from Association Executive Board Members. Next, we go on to California School Employees Association, CSEA.
Good evening Board, Dr. Avila, and Cabinet, and everyone. I have a couple of things I'd like to say tonight. One is, thank you for your decision regarding employee number 1492115. I greatly appreciate that, as I know she will as well. And I would also like to ask that you consider the CSEA Para Educator Conference. It is a conference that I understand is the best that CSEA puts out, and it is to help our instructional aides to be more effective in a classroom. It is unfortunate-- and what the best part is, this year it's gonna be in Ontario, so we don't have to pay for rooms or any of that other stuff. And the conference fee is $109 per member. So, I realize we have a whole lot of instructional aides in this district, but if we could somehow find it within our budget of the school to put together a team that can come back and share with the other instructional aides as part of a professional development for them, I think it would be an awesome adventure, because I think that with as much professional development as we're giving our teachers, that our instructional aides are lacking, and they are expected to perform in a classroom, and without the same type of professional development, I think that it's something that we're shorting ourselves on. And then also, I'm gonna speak on your next public hearing, just to move things on really quick. I am hoping that you all vote yea on this, the open public hearing on our contract, because once that goes through, we'll be able to start our 15-16 contract, which has my members real excited, so, because they want their raise. So, we're hoping that that all goes through, and thank you so much for your time.
And just a date for the conference? Did you give the date?
It's in April. It's not until April.
Okay.
I'm giving just really early, because I want to kind of start thinking that if we need to plug money somewhere, we can do whatever we gotta do.
Well taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we go to Communication Workers of America. Is Mr. Fletcher in the house tonight? Or somebody else from CWA? Going once, going twice. If they happen to come back, we'll give them the opportunity, but we can go next to Rialto School Managers Association, RSMA.
Good evening Board, Superintendent Dr. Avila. On behalf of RSMA, we just wanted to publicly congratulate Hanya on her-- oh, she wants me doing the Spanish. Buenas noches. I hope I said that right. Last time I got corrected. We wanted to publicly-- you got me flustered now. You can't tell, but my cheeks are red. We wanted to publicly thank Hanya for becoming the RSMA Classified Employee of the Quarter. We're very proud to have our confidential group participating in RSMA, so that's a group that we've been trying to join. And on behalf of RSMA and our President, Dr. Stewart, we wanted to make sure that we wish you all a wonderful Thanksgiving, and don't eat too much dressing. That was for me. Thank you.
Alright, uh, next we go to Item C4, Comments from the Superintendent.
Thank you President Montez, and I have continued to visit school sites and attend other events in the community. I will condense it in the spirit of time, but I have had the opportunity to visit classrooms that includes our VAPA program at the elementary school at Kelly, and got an opportunity to go through a lesson, a learning lesson with the Whackers, as they're called, with third and fourth grade kids there at Kelly. As mentioned earlier, I was part of the activities related to Red Ribbon Week. I also attended Movie Night at Warner Elementary. It was its first annual movie night that included Lowriders Hot Rods, cards from the Fontana Speedway, NASCAR, and the little ones created their own little box carts where they had the opportunity to watch a movie in their carts. It was a phenomenal event to be a part of. I attended Dia de los Muertos at Myler High School, and as Ms. Ruiz mentioned, was a part of the large contingency of district representatives for the Fifth District PTA Superintendent's Roundtable in Fontana. I also had the opportunity to attend, I believe it was the Seventh Annual Rialto Hall of Fame Induction that the city puts together. I understand it was originated, and it was facilitated at this event by Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Joe Baca. It was a great event, great alumni from the district, athletes that include a current member of the Tennessee Titans. Very impressive class of inductees to this year's Rialto Hall of Fame. Also had the opportunity to attend the 240th Birthday for the Marine Corps Celebration at Eisenhower High School. Also attended the very impressive Take a Veteran to Work Day held at Cordiac Elementary School. And as mentioned earlier, was blessed to attend the robotics competition hosted by Rialto Middle School, and led by a team, or led-- who led a team, Mr. Rod Campbell, who led his team to organize this phenomenal event, team which included Sherry Garcia and Shelley Gates, and Shannon Campbell, and also volunteers, as mentioned earlier, Mr. Russell Silva, and our very own Mr. Joe Martinez. And in attendance were also President Edgar Montez and Vice President Ms. Nancy O'Kelly. And he won't take much credit for this, but I know that he had quite a bit to do with it, our very own Dr. Ed De Souza. Monday, I had quite the history lesson. If you've been in my office, you see that there's a mural that's painted there with images of Rialto and the Big Rialto Bridge. And so, I was curious to know who had painted the mural and what the symbols there stood for. And so, I had the opportunity to spend some time with mother-daughter Debbie Mount and Carol O'Brien, both art teachers, one at Rialto High School and one at Carter High School, who did the mural and came down to give me some gifts and a quick history lesson. And so, in case you don't know, the city gets its name from Venice, Italy. Apparently, one of the daughters of one of the founding fathers of the city visited Italy many years ago and learned of the bridge and the canals. And in the name Rialto, it literally means High River, Rio Alto, that represents the canals. And during those years, this region had many streams, rivers, and canals, and so she recommended that the city be named Rialto in honor of Rialto, Italy. So, it was quite a lesson that I learned and very grateful for that.
And you should see our streets when it rains a lot. All these main streets become Rio Altos.
Especially the ones with the dips.
My next announcement is very special, because we have all been waiting to fill this very important position in our district, our Director of Special Education. Before I introduce to the Board and to the audience our new director, I do want to personally and publicly thank Ms. Erica Johnson, Julian Gutierrez, Erlyn Hyman, Lisa Garcia, and I'm missing one of the program specialists. Doris Monterrosa, Rosso, for stepping up and picking up a lot of the assignments that have been there and have done a tremendous job of keeping it together, along with, again, our very own Dr. De Souza, who has kind of taken part of the role of Director in addressing many of the concerns. And so, I have met with our new director and have advised her that I expect for all of our problems in special education challenges to be addressed by the end of tomorrow. So, please let me welcome and introduce to you our new Director of Special Education, Dr. Paulette Cause. If you can please-- So, to our Board, this is our new director.
Welcome, congratulations. We don't ask for much.
So, thank you and welcome to the Rialto Unified School District family. And also, just a quick reminder, our schools are off next week for Thanksgiving break, so we look forward to welcoming our students and school site staff back on Monday, November 30th. Also a reminder, Spelling Bee will be held on Tuesday, December 1st, at Garcia Elementary School at 6:00 PM. All 19 of our elementary schools are scheduled to participate. We also have a very special event on November 24th between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM, and that is, a number of district employees and community volunteers will take time off from their work schedules to visit the Women's Club of Rialto, where we will be delivering special donations, special items, and taking on a number of tasks to really refurbish the building. We are doing it in three phases. We'll begin with, again, some donations, and we'll bring in some projects, very special projects, that include flooring, that include painting, that include signs, that we will do over the next two phases. More of that information to come, but we welcome anyone who wishes to contribute to the effort, either in person or in kind, to please contact Ms. Saida, our very own Saida Jeffrey, for that effort. And my RUSD alumni, kudos, would like-- we would like-- I like to honor Dr. Robert Joseph Rodriguez, who is a Rialto High School graduate, class of 1996. Dr. Rodriguez received his bachelor's degree with a major in biochemistry and a minor in mathematics from the University of Redlands. And after completing his bachelor's degree, he went on to earn his master's degree abroad in biomolecular technology at the University of Nottingham. He then earned his PhD in biochemical physics from the University of Birmingham. Dr. Rodriguez resides in Cardiff, United Kingdom, where he is currently teaching mathematics. And my quick quote from the little book with 50 big ideas on leadership. Today's lesson is how leaders stay connected, LBWA. They lead by walking around. Real leaders operate at the grassroots level, maintaining high visibility and accessibility. This gives them a better perspective on what is happening, the effectiveness of their systems, and the well-being of their people. It keeps them in touch and helps them listen better and see things firsthand. Team members view leaders who LBWA as humble, concerned, and connected. So, when was the last time you left your office? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. Next, we go to Item C5, Comments from Members of the Board of Education, and we will begin with no other than our very own student board member, Mrs. Natalie Baca.
Miss? Misses? Thank you.
I caught myself.
Thank you. Okay, so I attended Parent Summit a while back, and I got the chance to listen to a very powerful and influential speaker named Consuela Kickbush. And basically, what she taught us was that education is important, it's your foundation, and it doesn't matter what background you come from, your race, ethnicity, that we shouldn't be denied the right to learn and that right to education. And I thought that was a very powerful message, and she was just a wonderful speaker and wonderful to listen to, so I'm glad I had that opportunity to attend and go to that. And I also want to talk about some programs within our district that I think are definitely helpful and important, and one of them would be PBIS, and it teaches appropriate behavior for students at school, such as respect for the teachers and other students, and respect for the school itself. It also teaches lessons on bullying and to promote not to bully, and if you see bullying, not simply to be a bystander, but to do something about it and stand up for others at school who are being bullied. I think that's definitely important, because it promotes a positive atmosphere for these students, and it's going to encourage them to want to come to school and want to learn, and I think that's super important, when students not only have the desire to go to school, but the desire to learn more and just have-- be full of knowledge, so that's definitely important. And then Alex.com, Dotcom, and Vocab.com are designed to help students with math and English, and I think those are two programs that are definitely helpful. I use them myself within my AP classes, and I definitely believe that it's going to help students, not just the students who are struggling, but the students who want to just improve on their skills as well. It's able to help all students from any range of-- if you have struggle, like difficulty with school, or just want to catch up or add to your improving your skills. So, I think they're two definitely helpful programs that our district is spending money on, and I think that their money is being spent wisely. And lastly, I-- today I attended a DSAC meeting, which stands for the District Student Advisory Council, and basically, we had a tour, a field trip of the district itself, and I was introduced to Cindy Stone, Director of Nutrition Services, Brian Montez, Supervisor of Grounds, and Irish Chu, Director of Facilities. And basically, we learned how our school comes about, like what it takes to build our school, maintenance, operations, how are-- basically, how the food is cooked behind the scenes. We got to discover what it takes to make the food and then get it delivered to our schools. I thought that was definitely helpful information that we as leaders can take back to our schools and share with other students who want to learn and teach them what that consists of. So, that was definitely helpful. And I'm super proud to be a student board member and attend these events, because then I learn more, and that's definitely important, to just be encouraged to know more about my district and know everything that we're doing and how we can improve and become better. And lastly, just want to say congratulations to everyone that received an award tonight. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we go to our very own board member, Mr. Joseph Martinez.
Thank you, President Montez. It's been a long night, so I'm going to try and keep this short. The reason I decided to give my key to Ms. Carter, to my understanding, back in the 80s, when she was here as a board member, she brought in computers. And we kind of, kind of finally tied that cycle together this year to where we had a bunch of old computers. And this year, thanks to the new funding formulas, we were able to afford to go to a three-year replenishment cycle. So that means instead of computers staying there for 20 years, 10 years, till they break, we're able to plan to replace them every three years or so. So that ties her beginning to our current cycle of education, which ties that into STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. I encourage everyone to attend a robotics competition. A year away, we've gotten another one planned, but the Mesa Program for the high schools is this Saturday. And that's going to be at UCR, probably 8:00 AM. And you can look for that online if you choose to attend, or just contact the high schools, specifically Rialto High School. I understand they are doing very well. And they have a history of winning. Next board meeting, first one, who can give me an answer to where Nicola Tesla and Marconi, what is the tie? How are they in common? I have a $10 bill for one male and one female elementary school student. So just write it down, send it in. I'll let it go to Ms. Saida Joffrey to collect them. And put the date on it. First stamp is going to win, first right answer is going to win it. Other than that, Thanksgiving is coming up. Have a great family time. Dr. Avila, thank you for attending Kiwanis Student of the Month regularly or having a designee there. And when I knew Kickbush, it was Colonel Kickbush.
Lieutenant Colonel.
Mm-hmm. And what a wonderful speaker. And thanks to CSEA, back in about 2008, if my old mind, you know, can tie that timeline together, that's when I heard her and recommended that she come in. But it's been that long. So she's here, she was here, and made a definite impression, as she did then. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next, we go to board member, Mr. Joseph Ayala.
Thank you, President Montez. Good evening, parents, staff, and viewing audience. Off the top of my head, I want to start with the red ribbon. I noticed that Principal Adam Wagner came up by himself. But in all fairness, when I was in the van, I didn't recognize him because we were driving by in a van, and you got to visualize this. I'm going, that's Superman. He's not standing there. There's a wall. So he's flying over the wall, and he's moving. I go, wait, where's the, where's the wires? Well, he had his stomach on a ladder, just high enough to where you couldn't see the ladder, and he's just balancing himself. But he was not by himself. He had all the, all the heroes from the Hall of Justice with him. And I says, you got to be kidding. All the kids were out there. I understand why he won first prize. And, you know, when you think about the story and red ribbon and, you know, what a wonderful opportunity for the kids to learn and participate in an event that too often we hear the stories that, you know, people go down the wrong road, down the wrong path. Well, you know, I can transition into, why am I grateful for today? Well, you know, I could spend a lot of time telling you why I'm grateful, but I will share that number one is that I'm grateful because, you know, my family's healthy, okay? That means a lot to me. My grandkids, my daughters, and I have empathy for you and your families because I know what my families mean to me, and I know they mean the same thing to you. And as I'm thinking about what else I'm grateful for, what comes to mind is that I live in a community where people care about one another. And that means a lot to me, you know? My wife and I looked for a city to retire in. Now, we could have gone back to where she lived, in Kansas. We could have stayed in other areas. We chose the wind tunnel of Southern California. And you know what? It's okay. It's okay. I love it here. So one other comment, I just look at these bulletin boards, I look at the veterans theme, and I look at the theme behind me to my right here, where the teacher, Mr. Vastas, took his students and gave them an opportunity to write down words of wisdom. And, you know, I think of, that's a great way to also conclude my presentation tonight. And words of wisdom, it's okay to disagree, okay? But it's not okay to disrespect. So, you know, if we're going to communicate, let's do it in a caring way and respect one another, and let's be fair. Thank you for the opportunity to share tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Next, we go to board clerk, Ms. Deanna Walker.
I'm going to try to be brief as well. I'm working on two 14-hour days straight, so I'm delirious now. So just really quickly, thank you for reminding me. We've gone so long since the last board meeting, a lot has happened. And the Parent Institute with Lieutenant Colonel Kickbush, again, that was my second time being able to hear her speak. First was at the Unity Conference in San Diego, and then again at our own Parent Institute. And the message that she gave to our parents and our young people was so connecting. I had some young people who, who were actually in the audience later on that week told me about the fact that this finally, it's a good thing that they finally got an old person who connected, who could tell a story that connected to kids. And I was like, I don't think that's a compliment, but, you know. So it was good, just good to hear that they actually were listening to the message and, you know, they chose to share that with me. And again, I felt that that was a great choice. So thank you for bringing her to our district to share the message that she gave. The boxcar, I was able to go to the boxcar night. And I was able to take my, a picture by a red convertible Cadillac, which is like my dream car, right? Oh my God, it was so beautiful. And two, two little boys who were there, they wouldn't move from in front. I was like, get out of the way so I can get this perfect picture. And they kept looking at me like, no lady, move. So finally, I think Saida came at that point, we just took the picture with the kids. But I was like lusting over this beautiful car and just looking at it. Now, that was the car for the grown people. But we're looking at all the different cars that the kids put together for themselves. And it's so funny because they were talking about, I watched a couple of kids argue over who had the best car. Now, neither one of them were that great, but they were really excited about what they had done. One was trying to hold the pieces, they kept saying, no, mine is better. But it was falling over on the side. So it was so funny just watching the little young people do that. I applaud the teachers and the staff that work with the students to put those things together because that's outside of the regular day. And to have that night to bring the students and the families together for the movie night, it was so great. My, I had my seven-year-old with me that night too. So she was like running around like, Mom, Mom, you know? So it was just really good. Again, applaud, I applaud the teachers and everything for putting that, that time and effort into that because that is an engagement activity. It's not just the kids, but it's the family. And that's what represents, who we represent. And what hopefully our district represents as well. So great things in that. And lastly, the College and Career Fair. That day was, the College and Career Fair was that day. We had the Lego competition. So I was able to, I think I saw you jumping in your car on your way out when I was getting there. Thank you too for the, the staff for Rialto for actually doing the College and Career Fair, specifically having a table for outreach around jobs that we're offering to our own community. So that was a great opportunity to be able to, you know, make sure that we're connecting into our community for some of the opportunities that we have. So thank you for making sure that we had a table there. And then lastly, again, the Lego, I went there and they were already at lunch. So a lot of people weren't around their own displays. But I was able to talk to a couple of kids about their display. They were doing a challenge around their trash, I think their trashness. And they were from like Escondido, somewhere around that area. And they chose to, and I'm thinking they're just going to like, kind of like, yeah, it's, you know, we're doing this thing. They literally were like, walked me back over and stood around me in a circle and began to explain the whole challenge and everything. And I was like, they are serious, they are intense. And they were in fifth grade, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And I was like, oh my God, but they were really intense, you know, and they were knowledgeable. They were looking at issues, really current issues, and this is how we're going to dispose of the trash, you know? And so that was just a really good way to, again, to engage young people in their minds, their own creativity. It's the big ideas, you know, where they, you think about the little things that kids do that become really big ideas because they're still like, anything can happen. We're like closed-minded, like, no, we don't have this. And they're like, no, this can be done. So it's just great to see that. I was able to see Cobb's, Cobb's team was actually there. So again, thank you to the teachers that put the time in to work with the kids on those projects to come out on the weekends because that takes away their own personal time and from their own families as well. So our commitment just to the excellence and creativity in our district, I commend and thank everybody for putting that time in. And I'm just so glad to be a Rialto board member. I say this all alone because the next time that we meet, I would have been a board member for officially a year. So I'm proud to be here and thank you for all having me.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Next, we go to our very own Board Vice President, Mrs. Nancy O'Kelly.
Well, everybody keeps stealing all my thunder. By the time they get to me, it's old news. No, just to comment also, Lieutenant Kickbush at the Parent Summit, that was phenomenal. And I don't know how many of you were there. I was in tears. I mean, and I saw all the, you know, the kids that were there, the teenagers there all sobbing. I mean, she was, I mean, her message was heard, and it was wonderful. So I, I think she was a wonderful choice. I also went to, I spent Saturday with the Lego competition. And I mean, that was my first time going. Mr. Martinez raved about it so much last year. I said, oh, I've got to go to that next year. It is so much fun. And the excitement and enthusiasm in that room, it's electric. You know, I mean, you just, the kids are just on fire for this. And I didn't understand anything that was going on. So I asked this gentleman next to me, who, this kid, he looked like about fifth grade, and he gave me the whole rundown. And I'm like, oh, okay. I got it. But the models they created and the tasks they were doing with them, it was fascinating. And then they had kind of like pit stops, like they had to fix something on the, on the robot. But the little kids, they had their little Tupperware boxes. They knew just what to do, what parts to plug in. It was really wonderful. And I have to say, we have got to get these classes in our middle schools, at least. Hopefully down in elementary eventually. They're doing, in Rialto, we're doing this as like an after-school activity. Think if the kids had, you know, an hour a day in a class to work on these things, what they could create, it would be phenomenal. So I really want us to think of trying to bring that in. I also had the honor of talking to a Girl Scout troop since our last board meeting. They wanted to, they're working on their government badge, and they wanted to talk to an elected official about being an elected official. And it was great. We met here in the boardroom to make it more real. And the kids had prepared questions, and the questions were very good. We bird walked a bit and got off topic and talked about cookies, but, you know. But, no. It was very important with the Girl Scouts. And I really enjoyed that opportunity and had a really great time. When I see the kids, like I saw there and at the Lego thing, you know, you just see our future is in good hands. You know, our kids are awesome. And we've just got to keep giving them what they need to be even more awesome. I want to congratulate everyone who won an award tonight. This was a busy night for awards, but these are always feel-good nights. You're just happy for everybody who got one. So I wanted to thank them again. And I want to wish everybody a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. Enjoy. Count your blessings. I know I'll be saying a special prayer for people in Paris, but we have a lot to be very thankful for. And enough said about that. And I guess that's it. So good night and happy Turkey Day, and we'll see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Kelly. Last but not least, yours truly, doesn't have a whole lot to say. I don't have a whole lot to say. I want to make it quick too. But I did want to touch on just a few things. First and foremost, I want to congratulate again everybody that was recognized tonight and was awarded tonight. Everybody much deserved recognition. I did want to make a correction though for the honoring of Mrs. Wilma Mina Carter. It's so awesome that she got the key to the district, very much deserved. But we always say the key to the district is the highest honor that can be bestowed by the district. That is incorrect. The highest honor that can be bestowed is to name a school after you, and she already had that. So, so, so I just want to say congratulations again for getting the key to the district, for everything she's done for this community, for this school district, and continues to do. But she in fact already had the highest honor, and not very many people get. So kudos to her, and thank you, Mr. Martinez, awesome choice.
It may be interpreted that it's the highest honor coming from an individual board member.
Well, you know what I mean, you know what I mean. It's still, you know, being a name, you can't top naming a school.
Right.
You know, you can't top that. But, but everyone that was awarded tonight, you know, very, very much deserving. I want to also just touch on the Parent Summit. Lieutenant Colonel. No. Consuelo.
Castillo.
Castillo.
Oh, yeah.
Kickbush. I finally got all of it. Was really something else to hear her speak. There are people in life that we will meet that have a special talent, a special ability to either make you laugh when they laugh or make you cry when they cry. And Mrs. Kickbush is one of those people that has a special talent that she just pulls you and draws you into the same emotion that she's feeling. It doesn't work on everybody, you know? But at least on half of the crowd that I've seen, it worked on. I was one of those that was trying to fight till the very end. She's not going to get me, I'm not going to look at her, I don't want to look at her. And all of a sudden, I just found myself tearing, you know, nonstop. And she just has that ability and that, that power. I definitely think we need to bring her back, not to make anyone cry, but because she's able, because she's able to, she's able to implement emotion, strong emotion into her message for these kids and for this community and for the parents and for the staff, you know? With her stories about her life and what she's been through and, and, you know, she's accomplished a lot through education and, and through the military and a lot of other things she's done in life. But I definitely believe that she's a, you know, anti-bullying, pro-education. What was the other word we heard earlier? I forget, Ms. Lindberg mentioned one of the courses they took over there.
The bias.
And conscious bias, all into one. That's what she is. You know, and, and we definitely need to bring her back. I do want to thank the people that were involved in organizing the Parent Summit. I know that it's very difficult. It's a Saturday, people have lives too, you know? And it's difficult to be asked to come on a Saturday and be present for this community that you give so much of yourself to, day in and day out. But I do have to say that for the first time, I, I... Um, but I, I do have to say that, um, for the first time, um, I, 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 I saw some changes that were done that perhaps, you know, like the saying goes, if it ain't broke, why fix it? Maybe we can go, uh, revert back to having the Parents Summit the way it's been done year after year after year. The way I, I will give credit to former leadership, uh, started it because it's always been one of our very best, um, and most well-attended, uh, by this community and by the Parents, uh, Parents Summit. So maybe we can do something. We did it last year and every year before that, so maybe we can do something to, you know, maybe go back to how we were doing it before. Um, so we can fill up that, that gymnasium with two thousand parents and students and let Ms. Kickbusch make everybody cry. The other thing I wanted to mention, congratulations again also to the Red Ribbon Week winners. Dr. Avila, I think you're sending, uh, starting the trend here. I think we have way too many winners to just select three. I think the selection of six, you know, ties was a great idea and, and very well-deserved. And I'm sure if we could, we would probably have three-way ties for all categories. But, um, you know, I, I think that was really nice. Everybody was well-deserving and, um, when Mr. Riala told me he saw Superman on the other side of the wall, I thought to myself, how'd they do that? Regarding Dia de los Muertos, um, and even Halloween, I know in the past during Halloween, um, perhaps our district can look at, uh, being a little, a little more lax for Halloween for our students. I mean, um, I, I think as long as students are recognizable, you know, they should be allowed to wear a costume or, you know, some face paint. If you can't recognize them at all, or they got a mask on, they have to take it off. I could understand, it's a safety concern because your teacher, if you're a teacher or principal or a staff member and you see, you know, somebody dressed as a monster and you don't know what they look like, they could be an armed robber for all you know, right? But as long as they wear costumes, you know, and face paint or whatever recognizes the students, I think we should move towards, you know, allowing the kids to, to, uh, uh, celebrate if they celebrate that a little bit more. I know some school districts are a little more lax in that sense. Um, so that's something to think about. Um, and it ties into Dia de los Muertos. Um, for all those people that have misconceptions about Dia de los Muertos, it's not, it's not an evil devil-worshipping type of celebration. It's, it's actually a very ancient, um, it's actually a very ancient tradition that goes back thousands of years to the people of Mexico and Central America and even some here in the Southwest. Um, it's a, it's a very, a very old way of honoring, uh, the loved past ones. And there's variations of it, but, um, I just wanna say that also, uh, that's something the district can look at. Moving, moving towards, uh, sharing a little bit of that culture to this community and, and everybody's welcome to, to participate in those kinds of traditions. Um, and I know that cities and school districts across the, uh, country are starting to really move towards, uh, that. The November fourteenth Lego Robotics, uh, I, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Martinez for holding down the fort and be there, be in there from beginning to end. I, I briefly, yeah, I, I mean, it's always good, you know, it's always good when there's at least one Board Member at, at all of the events we have. We know it's impossible for us to go to all of them, uh, but, you know, it's always nice when, you know, at least one of us can be there. Um, and, uh, this, this, this time, this day was actually, um, just, I just happened to drop by because I wanted to go and at least show a little bit of support. But I was really, really tired, I could barely walk. I actually participated in a five K, uh, that was held fundraiser that was held at UCR, University of Riverside. Um, they have an annual, it was a tenth annual Spirit of the Tribes-run five K fundraiser for, uh, students there. I was invited, I've been invited many years, finally decided to go and participate. Uh, unfortunately, I, I thought that I could do as good as I used to. And I, you know, maybe, maybe overdid myself a little more than what I thought I could do.
Welcome to my world.
Huffing and puffing, huffing and puffing, I did that five K in thirty minutes and something seconds, uh, which, which was really a surprise to me. Um, but, you know, after weighing what I weigh, my wife hit me in, in, in the shoulder, she albled me because I had the, according to her, I had the audacity to ask the first-place winner who covered the five K in, uh,
Fifteen seconds?
No, in seventeen minutes. He did it in seventeen minutes and, you know, five K's three point one miles. And I thought to myself, Jesus Christ, in seventeen minutes, what, you know, how did he do it, right? So he's over there stretching on the floor and I look at him and, and I had the audacity to ask him how much he weighs. And he didn't wanna answer me and, and, and I congratulated him anyway. And my wife says, why'd you do that? I said, if I weighed that light, I'd be able to do it that fast too, you know? But, but I, I didn't mean, you know, I didn't mean it in that way, but, but my wife says that I, it came out like that. But, um, the guy must've been ninety-seven pounds, I kid you not, man. But, but that was a, that was a really, uh, uh, really big accomplishment and I congratulated him and everybody that participated. But that's why I came in walking like a zombie to the Lego competition and was just there for a short, a short while. I wanted to go back, but I, I fell asleep like the rest of the day.
Edgar, all you have to say is, I get wind resistance because of my height. That's why I couldn't make that turn.
I, I, I don't know what it was, but, Jesus Christ, that, that was killing me. I was, I couldn't move for three days. But maybe we can have a five K, uh, Dr. Avila, for a fundraiser for the many causes here at the school district. We, we'll talk about that another time. Um, and, uh, last but not least, um, I wanna thank our student Board Member, Natalie Baca, for, uh, all of the, um, uh, progress that we're making with the DSAC and the student speakers. Uh, please encourage them not to be embarrassed when they come up. I know public speaking is very hard to do, but look at all of us, we're seasoned semi-pros here and we mess up a lot. But, um, just wanna, just wanted to ask, you know, to continue to encourage them to come up. Um, with that, thank, I wanna thank every, ooh, I'm sorry. I spilled some ice here and water. With, with that, um, let's finally move on here, it's nine twenty and we're barely gonna start our, uh, our meeting here. So thank you and ha- happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Kelly.
That's okay.
Alrighty. That's all part of the show.
Alright.
Okay.
Right here, put it inside here. Yeah.
Alright. We haven't even gotten to business yet.
Alright. I'm sorry, I'm tired. Alright, here we go.
Okay.
Let's get this show on the road, we gotta get our student Board Member home and a lot of, a lot of our staff members here have been here since seven in the morning, so we wanna release them too. Um, on to item D, public hearing. Open public hearing, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Any person wishing to speak on the item, on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. Uh, item one, public hearing pursuant to the requirements of Governmental Code and Board Policy, the form of, the Form for Public Disclosure of Proposed Collective bargaining Agreement AB 1200, Statutes of nineteen ninety-one, Chapter twelve thirteen, as revised by AB 2756, Statutes of two thousand four, Chapter twenty-five, Government Code three five four seven point five, between the California School Employees Association, CSEA, and the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. Do we have, uh, anyone here tonight wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank, thank you, Ms. O'Kelly and Ms. Walker.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the Superintendent for Individual Action. Approve consent calendar items referenced E through J. Do we have a motion to approve E through J?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, Mr. Martinez, thank you, Mrs. O'Kelly. Preferential vote by, wait, any, uh, discussion or pools? No? Alright, preferential vote by student Board Member?
Aye.
Thank you. Vote by Board Members?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All items E through J have been approved. We go next to, we go next to K. Discussion action items. First item, K one, approve a pre-construction services agreement with NEF Construction, Inc. for construction of new upgrades to the HVAC equipment for Eisenhower High School. As reference, K one point one in the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item K two, adopt Resolution number fifteen dash sixteen dash twenty-six to support the proposed Kindergarten Through Community College Public Education Facilities Bond Act two thousand sixteen, which if approved by the voter can provide for facilities, renovations, and upgrades in the Rialto Unified School District. Do we have a motion to approve item K two?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Vote by Board Members?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we go to item K three, adopt Resolution number fifteen dash sixteen dash twenty-seven, annual accounting of developer fees for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen through two thousand, two thousand fourteen through two thousand fifteen in compliance with Government Code Section six six zero zero six. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riala and Mrs. O'Kelly. Vote by Board Members?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Sorry, Ms. Walker. Item K four, ratify the tentative settlement agreement between the Rialto Unified School District and the California School Employees Association.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next we go to item K five, approve an agreement with Educational Achievement Services, Inc. for nine parents, four classified school staff, four principals, and three district office staff to attend the Family Leadership Institute, FLI, training in Las Vegas, Nevada from December one through the fourth, two thousand fifteen. Do we have a motion to approve K five?
That's as amended.
Correct, correct. Thank you, Mr. Martinez, as amended.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it with the stipulation that if anybody wins big, they have to share it with us.
Well, for, for, for clarification, I believe this is a, uh, training that probably most likely won't be held at a casino.
That's true.
But if they happen to go, if they happen to go on their own free time.
Right, right.
Which, you know, someone might, um, they can definitely share the wealth if they win. Next we go to item K six, adopt Resolution number fifteen.
We need to vote?
I'm sorry, uh, yeah, uh.
On five.
There was a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, K six, I, I need to relax, I wanna get through this so too fast. We're gonna go home right now. Alright, K six. Adopt Resolution number fifteen dash sixteen dash twenty, authorizing the filing of a Form J thirteen A, waiver requesting approval by the County Superintendent of Schools for the emergency closure and reduction in the computation of average daily attendance and instructional minutes for Thursday, November twelfth, two thousand fifteen, at Garcia Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And number K seven, approve the recommendations of the Administrative Hearing Panel, Administrative Hearing Case Number fifteen dash sixteen dash seven, and stipulated case numbers fifteen dash sixteen dash eleven, fifteen dash sixteen dash nine, fifteen dash sixteen dash four, and reinstatement of expulsion case number fourteen dash fifteen dash fifty. Uh, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, last but not least. Would Natalie, uh, do us the favor and, uh, call for a motion of first and a second for the adjournment of tonight's meeting?
You want me to motion to close?
I asked for it.
Or is there a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Technically, I don't think I can, but, um, somebody else in motion.
Sure.
And you, you gonna give it?
Yes.
Mr. Riala and, and, and Mrs. O'Kelly?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright.
Don't you pound your gavel and say adjourned?
Time is nine twenty-nine.